All right, good morning, everyone. It's about nine o'clock. Let's get our meeting started today. Would you join me and stand for a pledge and a prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful summer day and the cooler weather and the rain you gave us over the weekend. Thanks for bringing us together as elected officials, as members of the community, as employees of the county to conduct county business. We pray for guidance and direction, not only in this meeting but in our jobs in general, that we would make decisions that are best for this community. We just turn this agenda over to you and ask for your blessing upon it. Watch over our first responders and those that serve in our armed forces, wherever they might be across the world. We just pray for daily safety for them. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our first regular meeting of the month of July. It's the 12th. It's 9:00 a.m., July 2021. We'll begin after our pledge there with public comment time. I've got one request to speak. If there's anybody else that wants to speak, this is your opportunity to address the court on non-agenda items. And then, of course, you may speak during each of the agenda items if you have comments later on. Ms. Flowers, would you like to address the court? You've got here a request.
Thank you, and good morning.
Is that on?
It's not on.
Yeah, it's on.
Can you hear? Okay. I just wanted to speak on the importance of a purchasing agent for county. A purchasing agent is kind of like, you see the settings on your phone for that little gear, that little cog? Well, that little cog, there's a part in cars that fits in the steering column. And when that little cog, that part goes out, wears out, it makes the vehicle hard to steer. And a county government is kind of like a vehicle. Okay? We have an engine compartment which is composed of the auditor, the treasurer, and the county clerk. That's where your, that's where your power comes from. So on this vehicle, if you don't have something that steers and keeps it in line, then you have erratic spending and it walks all over the road, kind of like that. And that's why I wanted to impress upon the court how important it is to follow the guidelines within the Texas Local Government Code for purchasing agents for counties. The next thing I wanted to impress was to remember your oath. I had a very powerful experience with my own daughter when she graduated from Lewis and Clark Law School in Portland, Oregon, in September 2016, uh, May of 2016. And she passed her bar in September that same year. Well, I got to go to that swearing-in ceremony. And she was sworn in by the Chief Justice of the Oregon Supreme Court and all the justices there. It was very, very powerful and impressed on me the importance of taking that oath of office. And that's what I would like to impress upon each elected official, to remember that oath and that you're here for the county. I appreciate y'all again for letting me comment. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our last meeting, June 28th. That was the one I was not here. And Commissioner Parker, grateful to him for standing in for me. We have a set of minutes there. If you've had a chance to look at those, I'll entertain a motion whenever you're ready.
Make a motion when we approve the minutes?
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, a report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start on number one, please, sir.
We chip sealed County Road 1345, 1350, 1340, and 1355 with the help of precincts two, three, and four. Really appreciate y'all. Y'all did a heck of a job. We've been putting in culverts, patching potholes, and cleaned up trees from yesterday's storm.
All right. We've been working on County Road 1250 along with precinct one, and we share that road. So we have been getting it in shape and spraying it with a sealer. And County Road 1070, doing a lot of work on it. On the very end, has a pretty bad hill on it and a lot of ditch work on that. 1140 and 2200, we did some scabbing and got those roads in a lot better shape, as well as just a few little patches on 1030 that just about has it. I mean, it's ready for chip sealing sometime in August. I want to wait about a month and let some of that set up really good. And we're out working on a big tree this morning on 4550. I guess, wind rain got it leaning pretty good. We're trying to get it down. We've been mowing and we got the Winfield, we got the Monticello area mowed and we're in between, we're north, we're like south of Winfield, actually. Coming from Monticello to Winfield, headed to the Winfield area. And also, we chip sealed last Thursday and everything worked good. Equipment worked really good. And then we had a good product. Turned out really nice over in precinct one. Did about probably three miles.
Good deal. Was that the first project of the year?
Mm-hmm.
Number three?
Yeah, we got, it was on 1905, County Road 1905, other side of Green Hill. We got it ready to, to seal and then we're going to, then we'll be ready to chip seal. We've worked over a mile and a half in the last two weeks. And we've been, put a couple culverts in and repatched a little bit. It takes all of us to, on that road, to break it up and then pack it back down. So we got it going. So we, see one day this week or next week, we're going to get sprayed.
Jimmy?
4205, we had several saw spots in it, which is First Street out here. We tried to, dug the saw spots out, ripped up part of the road and, and re-put some iron ore in it. We're going to try to get it scabbed this week. It's pretty dusty out there with, with that iron ore in it, but we had to let it set long enough. We got this good rain on it over the weekend, so we should be in good shape to scab it this week. We're probably going to start scavenging 4260 from Cookville back through to FM 1000 and this week if something don't happen. Got a bridge, it's one of the last bridges we had in the, in the county, that the state told us that they couldn't, they couldn't fix it because the creek itself wasn't wide enough. So we're going to have to do something because it's got an old rail car in there and we're going to have to do something with it to get it fixed. It's, it's beginning to slough off on the sides and all, so we're going to have to do something with it. We're going to look at it today, this afternoon, and see what we can do with it. We've been side cutting and probably this week, sometime middle of the week, probably, we're going to start mowing right away, so.
Good deal. All right. Thank you. Item number four, update on the Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department, including discussion of written agreement with the county and continuation of funding with possible action. I put those two items on there. That's what I wanted to accomplish with this action item. We've got Chief McCray here. Colton House is here. Anybody else from your department besides Marcus, who I think of as my elected official, and I forget about him also being a firefighter?
Wesley, how are you?
Hello, Wesley. How are you? Glad you're here.
I can't hear.
That's all right. Colton or Marcus, would you like to bring us up to date from your perspective on what's going on in the last month? I've had one conversation with Chief Clark after his return. I know that there was an important meeting at the department. I know he had a modified audit done to give him some confidence before he left. But pulling it all together as a package, thanks for being here and telling us about this.
Just an update. So in mid-June, we had a meeting on the closing of Sugar Hill. And during that meeting, it was determined that there would just be retirement of some of the existing members. And then the department would be handed over to the rest of the members, myself and Wesley and my son, little Marcus. So I think it was July 6th, we had that official retirement party where Jerry Clark, Michelle, and Larry and Levon retired and the department was handed over. And I know some of the Sugar Hill community is ready for this thing to be up and going. But Wesley and I have, we're doing our best right now to make sure all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed and everything's done legally. I know Wesley's been working hard as far as making sure things are done. But the plan is to, I guess, hold a meeting fairly soon to invite new members. And I know that there was a vote before that they had a, I guess they voted with some board members and their officers, but we're going to invite those people to make applications and join the department. And there's a few things that have to be changed, you know, within the rules and regulations if we have to do, you know, do some of that. But as of right now, the department is still there, the equipment's still there. It's just a matter of making sure everything is done the right way. So when it's fully up and going, it's, it's done the right way. So, and I guess what I'm asking is, and I don't think funding has stopped, but if it has, I'm just asking that that be restored. Barbara, do you know?
Yeah, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Will you tell us who kind of your key players are at this point?
So there are three of us left on the department. And Wesley's the interim chief and I'm the interim assistant fire chief, and then there's my son. My son's currently in the fire academy and he's fixing to graduate. So there's three of us left right now and based, there are some rules in the bylaws that we're going to have to look at, and those are things that we've been reading closely. And I know that there's some consequences that if you don't follow those rules and bylaws, that there's some legal consequences. So that's what we're making sure that we take care of versus just rushing into it.
When will new members that have interests such as Colton and Mr. Grubb, when will they be official members? What has to happen for some of these others to be official members of the department?
So there is a background check company that the county has a contract with, I believe, DAT. Dana, do you know what it is, DAT?
It's, it's out of Longview.
Anyway, that company, there's two people that previously are on that account that have to be taken off and two people have to be added. And so right now, Jerry's actually made contact with him to get taken off and also he's given my information and I believe Wesley's information to get added on that account. So sometime today or tomorrow, I should get an email to start that process of getting added on to that background check company.
Okay.
And as soon as that, because right now, we can accept applications, but, I mean, any member that joins or wants to join, they still have to go through a background check and a motor vehicle or driver's license check. So we're waiting on the, on that to come through and it shouldn't be long. Once that's official, I think Wesley's working on a couple of things. We have to sign that contract for the county, the agreement.
Right.
Once that's done, we're going to come up with a date and I guess somewhat advertise or, you know, let people know, hey, we're accepting the applications for the Sugar Hill Fire Department, whether it's in a week and a half or two weeks or whatever it is. All those members that, you know, formed that committee before, welcome to come, come in, fill out applications. There has, there's, based on the rules and regulations, there's an interview process that has to be done. And their applications have to be processed through that background check. And once that's gone through, they can be official members. And from what I understand, until they're officially cleared through background check, you know, they can't be fully insured and they can't be official members, so.
And that insurability is key because that will enable them, and I'll let Chief address that.
Right.
That, we hope that'll enable them to be able to participate in training activities.
Well, and that's just the beginning because after, at that point, then, all the members that, and those are things that we're going to stress during that one meeting, you know, I know that a lot of people sign up to be a fireman. But these are the things that you're going to have to do, you know, once you're accepted as a, you know, as a, as a member of the volunteer fire department. You're going to have to show up for training, show up for meetings and not, I mean, just like Chief McCray said, be a name on a piece of paper. So, I mean, this is just the beginning.
Okay.
And once, once they're accepted on, our hope is that we can make it to where the active members can vote within 30 days for their own elections.
Good.
So instead of just three people voting on a whole fire department, I just don't think that that's, you know, if there were other members brought in, that whole committee, the whole membership can vote on their own fire department. And I know, I know a lot of them want things to happen right now and it's just not going to happen that way. But it is there and it is going to happen. It's just a few little steps that have to happen.
Got to be in the right order.
Right. And I don't know, you know, Wesley might, Wesley's done, he's spent day in and day out every day, and I know, you know, we've talked pretty much every day. So I know he's done more than his fair share of work to keep this thing going.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, back there. That sounds good. Again, one step at a time. It doesn't happen overnight, but we're in a whole lot better shape than we were a month ago, I hope. And I, and those that are asking, you know, do we still have a department? Yes, we do. And at least now, I can give them kind of a chronology of what it looks like is going to happen here and hopefully it will happen sooner than likely.
Right. Yeah, there is a department. All the gear is there, the trucks are there. It's just a matter of getting the formalities taken care of and then getting the membership, you know, figuring out a date to get the membership there.
Regarding the funding, I haven't thought about this. These guys, we haven't talked about it.
Right.
There certainly hasn't been a decision one way or another. I'd like there to be a decision on that today. And whether or not there's anybody to hand over a check to, you know, and there won't be any run money, obviously, but the base amount will be there. We don't have a, an agreement in place at this time. And so that would be a little bit out of the ordinary if we were to approve payment of the base amount without having the existence of a contract. I would propose to the court that we still accrue those amounts that are due and owing and then we hand over those monies, whether it's a check for one month or two months or three months at that time, once you, once you are established. Now, you can take an alternate view of that and say, no, we've got a two-month gap here and there's not going to be any funding during that time. But I would think that that money would be important, at least, you know,
Right.
startup expenses. So anybody have a question or a comment or how do you feel about that? Is that okay with you? Sit down.
I think so. And I'll let Wesley's chief say it.
Anything else, Marcus?
I don't think so. And I've been in contact with, you know, Jerry's been a big help. Larry McCray's been a big help. I've been, you know, me and Wesley have been working together, so it's, it's happening. Nothing's disappeared.
Y'all did it. I appreciate y'all.
It's just going to take a little bit of time. And then, once all the new members there, they can...
All right. Great. Colton, Wesley, would either one of you like to speak?
Once again, Colton House. Just want to say I appreciate all the work of Marcus and Wesley. It's been a big help. I was talking to them earlier. Unfortunately, I've been one of the, a couple of middlemen, kind of in the middle of everything. I want to say to anybody here, especially Chief McCray, anybody else, if you've received any animosity from anybody that's prospective members, I do apologize for that. There have been heightened emotions over this in the past, so I definitely want to apologize for that. Once again, I appreciate everything Marcus is doing. Sounds like a great plan. Some things that we can get changed over. I guess my kind of thing is, I kind of feel in the background, I'm not able to help because I'm not in that position to be able to help at the moment. But I'd like to advocate for Marcus and we'd certainly appreciate the funding. I know there's a couple of things that need to be done, such as hose testing and hydrostatic testing for the SCBA's. So I'm sure anything would be appreciated and any help you can offer would be great.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate Chief McCray and Chief Clark for all the help they've given me. I knew absolutely nothing about being fire chief because I never had a desire to be a fire chief. And I'm taking it a step at a time. And Chief Clark and I are in conversation with each other for one, one to two, three times a day. I talk to Chief McCray in person at our meeting and they've been so helpful. But as Marcus said, we're trying to be sure we dot all of our i's across all of our t's. We want it to be not only legal, but we want it to be the best it can be. Sugar Hill's had a good fire department for years and we'd like to see it back like that. And I would like to thank everyone that's helped me because I'm in the learning process and I'm just a temporary fill-in. And we'll get that taken care of probably within the next month. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, I appreciate your leadership as being one of those in the, in the leadership team that has gone from the old guard to the new guard and keep up the good work. Chief McCray, anything that you want to add to this conversation?
No.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Commissioners, anything else you want to say, comment, or any action specifically as it relates to their funding so that they can kind of know what to expect? Do we need to make a motion for that, to pay them, that back pay? Well, I think that it would, I think that it would be good because you are, you are deviating from...
And I want to keep paying it.
Well, you're deviating from our current policy that says now you've got to have a agreement in force. And for a while there, you know, we really didn't have a functioning department. I would, I would propose... Just wait till we get the agreement and then back pay. Well, I would, but I would propose that we continue to accrue the checks so that there's still going to be 12 checks for this department during the year. I'm not talking about run money. And before we just hand them over right now without, you know, them getting to the completion step of having, you know, a full staff and an agreed-upon set of officers, once we get there, then I'd like to be able to give them those two or three checks, however many that it is, so that they still have 12 months of checks. Okay.
Judge, I have, I have that contract in law and I can have Wesley go down there and give it, look over and sign it and get it turned in to back. So...
That's fine. Let's, let's decide on this first. Go ahead and make a motion that we'll keep accruing those payments and pay them all up front when we get that contract. Is that what we need to do? Make a motion for that and we'll continue on our process. Well, I need a second or I need an alternative?
I second it.
A second by Commissioner Parchment. All those in favor of continuing to accrue the monthly fixed portion that goes to each fire department and then turn over those accrued payments once the contract is in Say aye.
Aye.
Any, any further discussion? Okay. That's what, that's what our plan is then. Okay? Good deal for everybody. Thank you all. Thank you for all your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you, Colton.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Colton.
Thank you.
Item number five, I just put this on just as a standard. I don't know that I have anything to report back to you. Item number five is an update on repair and improvements to the Justice Center, including scope of work with possible action. Again, at, in my absence two weeks ago, we, the court approved the contract with add-ons with Stansel Construction that included not just patching the hole where the fans are on the north and south ends of the building where the fan's going to come out and we're going to seal that attic. That add-on was to do a complete replacement of the sheet metal, the corrugated sheet metal, to give a cleaner and finished look on that end. That was approved. And then the approval was given to completely remove any and all flooring in the building, such as the existing tile, I think is the only thing that's left, and to replace that with tile. And then the second part, or the second option there was to not just go back with a 12-by-12 tile, but to use a wood grain look tile. Is that the best way to describe that material? I think that it is. And that, the color choice has been made by the JPs over there. Justin Stansel brought them some samples to look at last week and Steve showed me the color that they had chosen to go with. So what we're going to hope and what Justin Stansel is hoping is he doesn't run into any shortages on building materials. There is a lot of things that are very hard to get. I can personally attest to that in the way of metal products, which includes HVA systems and the sheet metal for the ends of those buildings, possibly gutters. But let's just hope that those materials flow in and are not any kind of an impediment for getting this project started. Other than that, I don't, we certainly don't need any action here. I don't believe if there are any comments that you have or questions or any action that you would like to take that I don't know about, this is your opportunity.
Do you have anything?
No.
All righty. No action on item number five. Item number six, considering possibly approved purchasing and placement of official Titus County flags by Steve Austin representing the Titus County Historical Commission. Steve has provided me with a list here and it sounds like y'all did table this or were, there was some alternate opinions as to how many flags should be purchased and approved by the county. And here's the list that I'm looking at, Steve. The suggestion that you brought, which is exactly what we asked you to do, included the Titus County Commissioners' courtroom, Annex courtroom A and B across the street, the Justice Center courtroom, the Titus County Sheriff's Office, the Titus County Civic Center stage, the Titus County Extension Office, or a location determined by the Historical Commission, Titus County Judges' Office, or a location determined by the Historical Commission, and the Commissioners' offices, or locations determined by Historical Commission. And those last three, alternative locations to fill in those nine spots might be the library and its museum, the City Council chambers, the City Magistrate courtroom, the Chamber of Commerce, Justice of the Peace Office or offices or other locations may be considered if the historical, by the Historical Commission, if designated locations here opt out. What would you like to add to this?
Well, those are, as requested, those are lists that we designated first as, as we thought would be appropriate. Some commissioners opted out feeling that it might be more appropriate rather than for them to have flags in their own offices, to distribute them throughout the county at other appropriate locations, to be determined by the Historical Commission, and we don't have a problem with that. What we've looked at, we looked at the fund itself and there was a total of, at the time, I looked, $2,818.88 in the fund. I've contacted CRW Flags. They're going to provide us with 14 parade indoor quality flags with the fringes and stands and tassels and everything for the amount of $2,714, which includes shipping and everything. I have the invoice. And our request is for Commissioners' Court to release the funds of the commission. These are not county funds. The county is holding these funds, which is the funds of the Historical Commission, which we gathered up through donations and... which we gathered up through donations and presentations. Release those funds in the amount of two checks, one in the amount of the invoice for CRW Flags, parade indoor flags. And the second amount would be the balance of the fund, whatever that comes to Printworks, for us to have other flags printed, which are smaller than these. And we would void this fund altogether, and make these flags, spread them out through the community. But I wanted to make sure that we had Commissioners' Court approval, especially for Commissioners' courtroom, courtroom A and B, Justice Center, and other county properties. It'd be appropriate to place those flags there.
Okay. So the Commissioners apparently decided they didn't feel the need to have one of these flags in their offices. They don't have much of an office. I would rather see any flag that might be associated with my office to be used in a more public area. So I'm kind of taking the same position as they have. I like these other locations. However, you've got the Civic Center listed on here, and since we don't really control that, I would like somebody else to give permission and thumbs up on that at the city.
Right. Our request is, through CRW, we're going to get 14 flags. And of those 14, they're going to be distributed somewhere, but before we place them in the City Council chambers, we would, of course, ask the City Council if it's okay, if they don't want it, that we have a list of other alternatives that we would approach, such as if not the City Library, then maybe the Boy Scouts, maybe they would like a flag.
Well, would it be, make more sense to find all the locations that want one before you just order 14 flags?
Well, I need to get these flags purchased in one lump sum in order to make this price good. If we purchase them one at a time, the price goes up. So I have an invoice from CRW Flags to provide us with 14 flags, stands, flags, tassels, fringe, and we would distribute them, try to stay as close to that list as possible.
Okay. Well, come, as far as locations that I think the county has the right to approve, I think we've got Commissioners' courtroom, Annex A, Annex B, JP courtroom, Sheriff's Office, and Extension Office. So there's six that I think I personally say we have the authority to approve. Now, if you choose to buy eight more flags, I guess that's up to you.
Right. Right. The Historical Commission is going to present 14 flags of this quality throughout Titus County.
Okay.
We would approach those appropriate entities before we, we're not going to force a flag on anybody, but we'd like to make those donations of flags. If you'd like to accept, that's great. I just want to give you an idea of where we're targeting, what we thought would be good locations. And the balance of this fund, then, we're going to have smaller flags printed up by Printworks. We're going to avoid this fund. If we need additional funds in the future, we'll have fundraisers and produce funds the same way we did these.
Okay.
And if we needed something relative to the county that we think would be appropriate for the county to consider expenditures, I don't know, we would make that request at that time, but I'm not aware of anything going on presently.
Another idea, I've got, you've got a lot of civic clubs that meet there at the country club. You know, I know you've got Lions and Rotary, and there may be another one. That might be something you would consider. Commissioners, do you have any questions? The six that I mentioned are what I personally think we have control over. I'd like to see a flag in each one of those. But the motion here is to consider and possibly approve the purchasing and placement of Titus County flags. I would suggest you approve the purchase of this bulk order, and that you approve the placement on behalf of the county at whatever your choice is off of this list, either add to this list, or delete this list, or go with this list.
And to avoid that balance in that fund. Yeah. A second check would be for the remaining balance made out to Printworks, and we're going to buy whatever, whatever flags that that would cover. And I'll bring the invoice from Printworks to the Treasurer and order her for verification.
Okay. Make a motion for TCHC to void that fund, that banking account to spend that money for CRW Flags and for Printworks.
Correct.
And approve the locations for the Titus County offices that we chose here, and then we will see fit that you...
Do you want to specify what those offices are?
Okay. For, we approve the offices for the County Commissioners' courtroom, County Annex courtroom A, Annex courtroom B, the Justice Center courtroom, Titus County Sheriff's Office, and the Titus County Extension Office. And then we'll, we allow you to get with the city and see where those other flags, you know, need to be put at.
Correct.
We make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion. Any discussion, questions, second or an alternative?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion? Steve, thank you for the work. Thanks for the work you've done on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ms. Joyce, I have your list here. I've got everything for you.
Item number seven is to consider and possibly approve a contract between I3, that's the letter I, the number three, Bearcat LLC. Don't know anything about that name, how they came up with it, but this is the former Graves Humphreys Stall Limited, which we know as Net Data, or one of the entities at Net Data. I guess they've decided to go with a different name. But approve a contract, this is just some additional services with Net Data. And a contract between I3 Bearcat and the JP's offices for enforcement and collection of delinquent fines and fees. Can you add anything to this? Is this something that they have always done, and this is basically a renewal of a relationship that already exists? It may be with a newly named entity, but the services are the same. So Net Data provides that software, provides that collection service for the JP's offices. This just needs Commissioners' Court approval. The contract has already been signed by Judge Dunn and Judge Agan. It's one page in length. It's fairly simple. They've, in other words, they're saying this is the contract we want and need at the price that we're happy with. We just need you, Brian, and the court to sign off on this. No cost to the county. Nothing's free with Net Data. How can it be no cost? Okay. Okay. So they take a little piece of that collection. All right. Any questions about this? Otherwise, I would recommend your approval.
I'd make a motion. Would you?
Motion by Commissioner Parker to approve this contract, and a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor?
Aye.
Considering possibly approve two bids in a total amount of $5,000. So there's a three and a $2,000 bid totaling $5,000, for two quarter-acre lots, the Benjamin T. Porter survey. These were lots that had previously been struck off at a delinquent tax auction. So we've been through this process before. Let me tell you a little bit about these two lots. This is a memo from Tim Taylor. "I have received a bid for the purchase of the above-referenced lots, which had been previously struck off at a tax auction back on July of 2020. This bid is for less than the amount of the judgments which led to the sheriff's sale, and it's also less than the appraised values. Alan Salinas has offered $2,000 for one lot and $3,000 for the adjoining lot, which has a mobile home on it. The judgment amount was $5,732." So it's a few hundred short of the judgment. "The taxable value for this property is listed as $2,250 for the vacant lot and $12,863 for the lot with the mobile home on it, which will be sold as part of the real estate because the prior landowner elected to have it taxed in that manner. I would request the court to take some action on this offer, either by acceptance or rejection, and I've prepared a resolution." So it's about all that I can tell you. You know what the judgments were, you know what the appraisals are, and they've been sitting, not collecting any taxes for some time. Here is an opportunity, as we usually have, to get these two lots back on the tax rolls, although not as much, but something's better than nothing, and maybe Mr. Salinas will put some improvements on one or both of these lots.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I can give you a better idea here. They are off of County Road 1550, near where it intersects with the Green Hill Road. 1550 and the intersection of the Green Hill Road. Okay. Does somebody give me a motion? Commissioner Applewhite made a motion to approve this sale and accept this $5,000 bid for two lots, $2,000 and $3,000 each.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are down to approval of oral and written reports that Barbara has supplied you with.
Make a motion, will you approve the report?
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And right after that, item number 10, considering possibly approve your Treasurer's report provided by Cheryl.
Make a motion.
Motion's made. Was that Commissioner Applewhite makes the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Parker seconds. Any discussion on that report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me get your signatures on those. We do have a couple of budget amendments here in item number 11. This is 2021-42 and 43. Number 42, you'll remember from your last Commissioners' Court meeting two weeks ago, where you approved an additional $1,500 to be spent on the Annex restrooms, two sets of public restrooms over there, a men and a women, a men and a women. $1,500 gets some additional paintwork there, and a different type of sink with a pedestal. So $1,500, no impact on the budget, just an adjustment between accounts. And then adjustment number 43. This is, this has to do with the Justice Center. And Barbara, the question I didn't get a chance to ask you beforehand, do we, this insurance figure, where is it coming from?
Wade, I sent him an email, and Wade responded, and the amount of the bid that he thinks will be covered by insurance.
Okay.
He had it, and he broke it out.
We don't have final approval yet. This is our best guess at this time, how much the insurance is going to cover.
I can tell you the details, and he goes, "General conditions, he thinks they'll cover $4,200, wall and ceiling $28,000, flooring replacement $44,000, drywall $4,200, interior wall, then finish $79,000, ceiling install $23,000, for a total of $1,8389." And then we had the Newman Electronics, you know, they're going to remove some things, put some things back in, and that brings us there to that total of $1,8474.
Got it. Okay. So the grand total on our project over there with the add-ons, $362,041. We hope that roughly half of that, $184,000, will be covered by insurance, leaving us with about $177,000 that we'll have to take out of our fund balance to complete that work. So the insurance gets us back to the same building we had before. We, however, opted to do some work on that building while we had the opportunity with it being empty, and that's going to cost the county about $177,000 to get that. So we'll have a much nicer building that heats and cools and doesn't leak and doesn't burst pipes in the winter. Okay. Those are your two modifications here in the form of budget amendments.
Make a motion, will you approve the amendments?
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 12, sign pay orders and approve payment of our current set of bills.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Motion to pay those bills. Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And Commissioner Applewhite seconds. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing comments. This, the one comment that I've got, just this one, has to do with, and I'm sure not picking on Jeff or Precinct One, but the subject matter is, we had a, and I don't know all the details, Jeff can elaborate, but apparently we had a windshield of a Titus County resident's car that was broken. I don't know what the cause of it was, but he indicated that it was Precinct One. And the question I've got is, or and the recommendation I've got, is how do we deal with things like this? I think we've taken different positions in the past. And in this particular case, I think that the resident was referred to our insurance company, and, you know, maybe he thought he was for sure going to get paid by our insurance. But I just want to, and I don't know about this particular situation, how it's going to be treated. But my suggestion, and I had a lengthy discussion with Todd Kiesel with TAC as to what we should do. For one, I don't think that we should tell the taxpayer, "You just need to call TAC and report your damage," and they will decide whether or not they're going to pay you. And we certainly don't want to lead them to believe that just because they call our insurance company, that their damage is going to be covered. I think that they will investigate it. My suggestion is that maybe we should be the ones to call TAC and report the claim so that at least they have our side of the story, as well as they can get a call from the resident and make a decision. So in talking to Todd, I said, "Are rocks that fall out of a truck, or a rock that gets slung by a mower, or are these going to be denied, or are they going to be approved?" He said, "Well, I don't know. It depends on the circumstances." And they're not always going to be denied, and they're not always going to be approved. So the more information that they have, the more helpful we're going to be to that resident. I don't think anybody on this court is of the opinion that we want to avoid paying claims as much as possible, nor do I think we want to pay all claims as much as possible. I do think that it should be left up to the company that we pay premiums to as to how this particular damage will be dealt with. And if you get to a situation where the coverage is denied, and we've had this happen, then we can always come back and decide amongst ourselves or within your department how you want to handle that. want to handle that. So that's just going to be my suggestion in the future, not just send the, the person who's had damage to Nanette. You know, she certainly doesn't know about the situation, but if you want to find out the insurance company phone number where you can call TAC yourself and just say, hey, you may be getting a call from John Smith about this particular rock damage or whatever it was, let me give you as much information as I can. And be careful before you indicate to any taxpayer that, don't worry, your, your loss is going to be paid for, because we don't know that it will. And we can't approve and say that for sure until we know what the insurance company is going to do. And again, if they deny it, you, you may or may not be able to use county funds in order to do that. So that's all I had to say on that subject matter. Just, it's just something I learned with, with Nanette's help and, just a second, with Nanette's help and with Todd Kiesel's help. Any comments, suggestions on that? Any alternate way that you think we ought to do, do stuff like this? I think as long as we're all consistent, I think we're going to be better off. Okay. Elizabeth?
I have a similar incident happened. Would you come up to the mic so that those watching can hear you? I had a similar incident happen about a year ago. It was 2020 March, and here in the city. I was traveling on Washington Street behind the baseball fields, and there was a pothole right on the side of the road. It's pretty big. And when I hit it, because there was a car coming at me and I had to go over, when I went over that pothole, it kept two tires on one side of my car. So I went and got those tires replaced, but then the next day I did go to the city, and their procedure was I had to write out pretty much kind of like an incident report and take all my, I took my invoices from where I got my tire fixed, and all that stuff was sent in to their TML insurance company. So that's just the procedure that the city does. So that's just my, my experience.
Commissioner Parker, closing comments. I don't know what he does. Commissioner Applewhite?
I'm glad the fire department stuff's doing good. Thank you, Brother Vandiver. I know it's been a lot of work. And Marcus stepped up to the plate, a lot of the residents out there. That's great. Thank y'all for your work.
Commissioner Parchman?
You know, on that incident, I did call the sheriff's department out there and had a report on that. And I did give the gentleman the name of our insurance company so he could file a claim and state his case, and I, you know, would like to leave that up to the insurance company to decide, you know, the ending factor on that deal, because I don't want, you know, once they start paying for everybody's stuff, I don't want people just following a county truck saying, hey, let's get behind him so we can get paid today. I, you know, I don't believe in that, so I just, my, my deal didn't pass with experience of my own business like that. I've always let it up to my insurance company, let them to decide.
I, I agree. And the only thing I would add to that is the side of the story that that taxpayer may give may be completely different from yours. So any input you can give our insurance company, let's do whatever we can to keep our premiums low.
I agree.
And we, we sure, you know, we don't want to challenge people. I think that's a great way to handle it. Here's our insurance company. You call them. I'll also talk to them and tell them what happened here. And, and sometimes I think it's, you know, we want to see that taxpayer taken care of, and sometimes, you know, we may not, depending upon the circumstances.
I think they need to look into the way the action, the taxpayer was acting too, because, you know, he could have got somebody hurt.
Yeah, he tried to run me off the road two times.
Oh, I don't know about this.
And it was a pretty dangerous situation out there. He had 18 wagons coming both ways, and him, he stopped in the middle of 271. It was, it was pretty bad.
Well, I was wondering why the sheriff was involved because of that. Okay.
Yeah. Like I said, somebody could have got hurt out there pretty bad. You know, just him trying to run him off the road and everything else is, is not tolerable.
All right. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that a motion.
Motion. Commissioner Applewhite?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.